...meeting this evening. Item three on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by silent prayer and invocation. I invite you to please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is the meeting on March 20th, 2018. Alder persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll move to approve the minutes and dispense with the reading.
Motion by Zurflu, is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any discussions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, moving to a vote in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item five is explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Individuals wishing to address the body may do so tonight, only on items appearing before our agenda and which will be invited to the podium to introduce themselves and be recognized by a council, after being recognized by a council member, in which they'll be allowed to speak for no longer than five minutes. Item number six is my report. Good evening, council members, staff, and those here watching from home. The Mayor's Youth Council have started working on their summer projects. The Third Annual Kids to Park Day, a day to encourage kids and families to get into their local and state parks and play, will be held Saturday during Blossom Fest as a family-friendly option at the Music Festival at Robinson Park. They're also getting teen fireworks fundraising underway for the Fourth of July show, which the group has an annual fundraising goal of $12,000. The group also continues their work towards the $250,000 goal for the Aquatic Center development. They have set up a day with Culvers and will be meeting to set up later this week with Marco's Pizza to continue to generate awareness and buzz about the project. And at their meeting this afternoon, they have also planned the ongoing commercial to be played on our public access channel to inform the public about the project. The Beautification Council annual tree sale has kicked off. You can pick from a variety of trees for yourself or to donate to the city to plant. The group has set a goal of 100, and so far they're halfway there with over 50 trees sold. So if you'd like to help them and meet their goal, we've got contact information for Sue Winch to order and for more details that you may, or questions that you may have. Orders must be in by May 7th. And as part of the annual Arbor Day in April, we're planning outreach to highlight the many efforts and technologies associated with our forestry program, of which I'm working with Public Works Director on some outreach with that. The Beautification Council is also participating in a spring clean, neighborhood cleanup event with Current, the Young Professionals Organization. That'll take place on April 22nd from 10:00 to noon, where they will meet at Sportsman's Pub and fan out from there. You may check out Current in the city's Facebook page for a link to register and for more details. Our 10-year-old tired and at least one rotten city entrance sign are well beyond their useful life. Collaborative entrance sign committee has been meeting for over the last, for the last year, and we now have nailed down a design and a vendor, and it's my hope that the city will join the other partners in financing the project with a referral forthcoming for that project in May. On the aquatic park development, with the facility design essentially complete, seating and fixture selection is underway, and a few benches are in the lobby here to sample, as well as the details, the finalized details for the playground equipment have been incorporated into the final design. As mentioned around fundraising on the youth council, we also remain in fundraising to achieve the $4 million necessary to break ground. A grant submission was entered in March for the project and remain in the hunt for the lead gift. If the goal is met this summer, a groundbreaking could occur yet this fall with an opener midsummer next year. On the riverfront development, last, a week ago Monday, actually late last week, sorry, city staff and I went to the torque quarry near the landfill on the northwest side of town to start scoping some of the rock selection for that project. We received our final permits officially on the project on Friday afternoon from the DNR after many months of waiting for that, and I understand the construction kickoff meeting will be held later this month. On the East Grand Avenue project, working with the DOT and a contractor to incorporate streetscape into the design, as the 2009 waterfront plan calls for, and more information will be forthcoming on that, running into some issues with the DOT in recognizing that that project isn't a downtown corridor and really should have some streetscape associated with the design of that project, since it's likely to last many, many decades in our downtown area. Last Friday, we received a word that we've been accepted to work with the Harvard Behavioral Insights Group on a cohort to craft nudges or small tweaks to policies and programs that help increase the chances of a particular outcome. This free program is available for local governments who aim to save money, improve services, or reach constituents in new ways. Our project will focus on recycling noncompliance. The city has made, been making a strong effort to educate, enforce recycling ordinance, and promote recycling participation, but chronic resident behaviors remain a major barrier. These violations include such as, things such as bin orientation to the curb, garbage at the recycling bin, or in the recycling bin, recycling bin overflowing and the covers not being closed, as well as recycling being left outside the container. It still amazes me the sheer volume of complaints and noncompliance we have with the program, and it's our hope that we'll be able to get 100% of city residents to comply with the current recycling ordinances, increase recycling participation and landfill diversion, of course, by capturing more recyclable material, and improve efficiency and resident satisfaction ultimately through further education and a full thorough review of our current program and how we're communicating with our residents. The duration of this project is 12 months. I'll be working with the Community Development Director and Public Works Director, as well as others in the Street Department, to make tweaks to that program, hopefully to get 100% compliance. So we're pretty excited about being selected, I think, as four cities around the country that submitted an application, and they found enough interest in the project for us to work with students at Harvard to review the program at no cost to the city. Over the last month, I participated at the Boys and Girls Club's Spring Break, where got to read one of my favorite Dr. Seuss books. Yesterday, Chief Levens and I returned from a Mayor's and Police Chief's meeting titled Keeping Cities Safe in a Changing Environment. Indiscriminately gun violence and opiate addictions are affecting cities everywhere, and we spent a day and a half hearing trends and emerging methods related to school safety, community policing, combating addiction, and mental health challenges. The department will be working on a review and consider recommendations on the topics that were just mentioned. Last Friday, the city clerk and the police department and I hosted St. Luke's students here in the council chambers, preschool students, I guess, to talk about city government and our role and to field their questions on a variety of topics, of which they were very interested to hear about the Aquatic Center and the splash pad development that it'll open, at least the splash pad will open this early summer, if it ever gets summer. The United Way of Inner Wisconsin Volunteer Breakfast is slated for next week, and be participating in acknowledging community volunteers who are being recognized by the United Way for their efforts in our community. YP Week, the Young Professionals Week, is just two weeks away with panels and experiences planned across the city. Again, residents and interested individuals can check out their Facebook page or their website to learn more about the efforts planned and experiences planned in the course of that week. Tomorrow, Wheeler Chevrolet will be celebrating their grand opening ribbon cutting. Their multimillion dollar investment in bringing the new Chevrolet dealership back to Wisconsin Rapids will be celebrated. We're going to be hosting senior GM leadership from Detroit for the day and for ribbon cutting, as well as a driving tour of Wisconsin Rapids. So we're excited to acknowledge their investment and obviously the opening of that dealership, which is the first of two phases as they bring GM and the other products under, under one roof. Proclamations issued on April 3rd, the National Service Day, and that concludes the proclamations. And I guess for those that, the two alder, or the one alder that's not here and the two that are here, I want to just acknowledge it's been a pleasure working with you and for your terms in office for the two years, or the two terms that both of you have been here. I do hope that you stay engaged, as I understand, take some time away from us that you need, but acknowledge the work that you've all played in making some things happen in our fine city. As I'm, as I've experienced, and I'm sure both of you can appreciate, renewed appreciation for our city and the many assets and things that we do have in the direction we're headed, and how important it is for our city council to be proactive, ambitious at times, and taking calculated risks, as we know that change doesn't happen on its own, and nor does it happen just by city council action. So I want to acknowledge both of you for taking some time out of your lives to serve the fine city of Wisconsin Rapids, and I do have a plaque that I want to acknowledge both of you, so I figure it'd be appropriate to acknowledge at this time. Thank you. Todd, present you with your plaque here first.
Thank you for your service.
I don't know. Debbie Nash, she was, she was the, and if you come back, I think there's some room at the bottom of the plaque, so I don't know. Been threatening to come back at some point. Save some space here at the bottom. That's right. Thank you, thank you guys.
Anything to say? I'd yield some time to you folks if you had a quick thing to say on the record.
I just want to thank city staff, fellow alderpersons, and I just want to urge everybody to plow ahead, keep it going, as the mayor stated. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my family, because when I changed my phone, my wife took half my calls for a while, so. And got a good replacement, and I'm sure I'll be talking to Shane as well, so. But thanks again, it was a pleasure.
Thanks, Terry.
I would also like to say thank you to city staff, Adam and Dawn, Tim who's not here right now, Beth, Dawn's predecessor, Jim Stack, Andy Kirkpatrick, with you gentlemen, Mr. Dolan, Terry, and Thad, and Paul, and the mayor, Tom, and Mr. Kellogg here, Scott, and Joe, and before you, Lee Tao, and before him, Chad Whirl, Scott, and Dave Kirkman, Joe. I have really enjoyed meeting all of you and being exposed to your presence, getting to know one another, having an opportunity to serve together, and the camaraderie was just great, and I will be forever thankful for that. I also thank District Two for their support for me, and it's certainly a humbling experience to serve the city, and I would encourage my successor and Shane also to continue with a lot of the initiatives that this council has started, because they're, they're good projects, and they will help the city of Wisconsin Rapids move forward, so. Just thank you all, and it's been a pleasure.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven is a presentation by the clerk of the mayor's March 26 veto of the city's, of the council's approval of a temporary, of an ordinance amending certain sections of 11.14 of the municipal code regarding the temporary residential sale of agricultural products, attachment number two. Allow the clerk to spend a quick moment to explain the process just for everyone's benefit.
Okay. So, the mayor's veto is a statutory power that he has. Basically, once the council passes an ordinance like, like this produce ordinance from March, I have five days to present the mayor with that ordinance. I presented it to him on, or five working days, rather, so I presented it to him on March 26th. The mayor can either approve or disapprove. He can choose not to sign the ordinance, in which case I would just sign, and it would still pass, but if he chooses to disapprove, then that's, he can use his veto power. The veto is attached in your packet, attachment number two. So, as far as options, I'm sure the mayor might want to speak to this, but I can give you the options of, your options as a council on what to do with this veto. And this is as far as motions. You could make a motion to override the veto. However, that motion to override would require six votes, so regardless of the amount of council members here tonight, there's only six members here tonight, to override, you'd need six votes. And then you can also make a motion to take up the veto at a future meeting or postpone this, this veto until one of the next meetings. I would just ask if, if someone chooses to do so, to specify either the reorganizational meeting on the 17th or the regular April council meeting, or the May 15th council meeting. So is that, is that clear for everyone?
Is there an option for them to, because it's on our agenda this evening, to, to take action yet tonight?
Absolutely.
Right, okay. So that's one of the options.
I make a motion to postpone it till the reorganizational meeting.
Motion by Kubashak to postpone to the next week, next Tuesday's meeting, the reorganizational meeting? Is there a second? There's a second by Dolan, sorry. Now we've got the computer backup. Second by Dolan. Any discussion on, on that item? All right. I wasn't going to speak much on it, because essentially I've spoken on it before throughout some of the process when we've taken the item up, where it's, it's needed a tiebreak, tiebreaker vote. So essentially my reasons remain unchanged, of which I've identified some of those in here that I believe, and hearing from some of the residents after the passage, that there was some major concerns that this could have some sweeping effect on various residential neighborhoods, of which certain activities like this would be in major conflict with health, safety, and welfare. So I just, you know, felt that the council should have some further deliberation on it, and that certainly was my primary rationale for, for that. Alder person Furkey, you're next.
So, this has been portrayed as an ordinance to allow the selling of pumpkins on the street corner. There's a lot more to that, to this ordinance, what it would allow. It also allows the selling of goats on the street corner. It is far more sweeping, anything agricultural, Christmas trees, farm animals, pumpkins, it all is included. So, I, when it passed the last time, I was not in the majority, and I would ask that the future council members really look into this ordinance before they just go by approving what the past council has done.
So the motion is to postpone, well, sorry, postpone, sorry. You were going to say something.
I just wanted to clarify that the motion to postpone is just a simple majority vote, so.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion, a second on the floor to postpone, essentially put the item back on the, the next April, or sorry, the next common council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried. This item will be on the agenda of the April 17th common council meeting.
All right. Item number eight is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held on April 2nd. Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on April 2nd in the first floor conference room here at City Hall. Members present included, present included myself, Shane Burkhart, Fran, Aaron, Lee Tao, Joe Terry, Sue Wesley, and alderperson Furkey. Others present were Adam Tagan, Brett Salshider, Mike Bovey, Steve Tint, and, excuse me, Brian Hudson. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one is approval of the report from the March 5th Planning Commission meeting. There was a motion by Burkhart, second by Aaron, to approve the report from the March 5th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two is maps and plaits received. Item A was Gerber CSM. The applicant was requesting a certified survey map approval for the reconfiguration of two parcels and the dedication of property as public road right-of-way. Subject properties are located at 1411 and 1431 First Street North. Item, let's see, there was a motion by Furkey, second by Tao, to approve the CSM's reconfiguration of parcels 3405515 and 34095516 as proposed on the attached CSM, with the inclusion of three-foot of street right-of-way along First Street. Motion passed unanimously. Other maps or plaits received. Southwood County YMCA Certified Survey Map. There was a motion by Burkhart, second by Aaron, to approve the Southwood County YMCA CSM, subject to staff comments and review, and that motion carried unanimously. Item two is James Bocock, a extraterritorial certified survey map. There's a motion by Aaron, second by Furkey, to approve that, noting that the right-of-way would be substandard of city requirements of 66 foot, and that motion carried unanimously. Item three, Plan 180141, Southwood County YMCA. The applicant is requesting a site plan approval to allow the redevelopment of a former mall into a new YMCA Boys and Girls Club and VA clinic within a B2 general commercial planned unit development district. The subject properties are located at 555 West Grand Avenue. The proposed site plan and landscaping plans were presented in detail, as were the staff recommendations for conditions for approval. There was a motion by Ruwings, second by Furkey, to approve Plan 180141 within the seven modified, with the seven modified conditions recommended by staff, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four was adjournment. There was a motion by Aaron, second by Furkey, to adjourn, and that motion passed unanimously. Meeting adjourned at 4:44 PM. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that item?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Furkey, is there a second? Second by Zurflu, any discussion? Any requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item nine, standing council committee reports. Item A is a report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting held on April 9th. Alder person Zurflu, yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Monday, April 9th, 2018, in the third floor conference room at the City Hall. All members were present. A list of others present will be on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM. Item number two, request permission to apply for the Better Cities for Pets Grant offered by Mars Pet Care in the United States Conference of Mayors. There was a motion and a second to approve granting permission to apply for the Better Cities for Pets Grant offered by Mars Pet Care in the United States Conference of Mayors. Motion carried unanimously. Item number three, consider approval of a request to fund the facade improvement program within the downtown waterfront district and to have the program administered by the Heart of Wisconsin. There was a motion and a second to approve the request to fund the facade improvement program within the downtown waterfront district and to have the program administered by the Heart of Wisconsin. The funding of $23,250 will come from the room tax allocation for economic development budget. That motion carried unanimously. Item number four, consider approval of a request to release the request for proposals for the East Town Plaza redevelopment. There was a motion and a second to approve releasing a request for proposals for the East Town Plaza redevelopment. That motion carried unanimously. Item number five, review and approve a proposal from Tyler Technologies for the purchase, implementation, and maintenance of new human resources financial software. There was a motion and a second to approve the proposal from Tyler Technologies for the purchase, implementation, and maintenance of new human resources financial software in the amount of $256,060. That motion carried unanimously. Item number six, consider for approval a resolution amending the 2018 budget. There was a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 13, amending the 2018 budget. That motion carried unanimously. Item number seven, consider a special events application submitted by Grove Elementary School and the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for the Grove Elementary 70th Birthday Parade to be held on June 1st, 2018. The applicant is requesting that Grove Avenue, Lincoln Street, Clyde Avenue, and Port Street be temporarily closed. There was a motion and a second to approve the special events application submitted by Grove Elementary School and the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department for the Grove Elementary 70th Birthday Parade to be held on June 1st, 2018. The applicant requesting that Grove Avenue, Lincoln Street, Clyde Avenue, and Port Street be temporarily closed. That motion carried unanimously. Beverage operator license applications. There was a motion and a second to approve the beverage operator license applications as presented. List of applications is on file in the clerk's office. That motion carried unanimously. Item number nine, audit of the bills. There was a motion and a second to approve check numbers 71321 through 71840, and manual check numbers 99635 through 99659. That motion carried unanimously. Item 10, set next meeting date. No action was taken on that item, as the members of the committee will be changing. Item number 11, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session under Section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, "Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session." There was a motion and a second to go into closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, parent one, parent E of the Wisconsin statutes. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. Sub A, in closed session, the committee will discuss a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centralia Center. In closed session, the committee discussed a request from Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated to lease space in the Centralia Center. Sub B, the committee may return to open session and take action or make recommendations regarding the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated request to lease space in the Centralia Center, or may adjourn in closed session. There was a motion and a second to return to open session. A roll call vote was taken, and all members voted in the affirmative. In open session, there was a motion and a second to direct city staff to negotiate a lease agreement with the Wisconsin Rapids Community Theater Incorporated for the space in the Centralia Center. And that motion passed unanimously. Item number 12, adjournment. There was a motion, a second to adjourn, which carried unanimously, and the meeting was adjourned at 5:51 PM. And I'll make a motion for adoption of the report.
Got a motion by Zurflu, is there a, second by Furkey? Are there any requests to speak? Alder person Kubashak, you're first.
Can I have number six held out for separate vote?
Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots, with the exception of item number six.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Leaves, item number six, consideration for approval of resolution amending the 2018 budget. Alder persons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I make a motion to postpone till next week's meeting.
A motion to postpone that item? Is there a second? Second by Zurflu? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I understand that this is a carryover budget amendment, and it's typically done every year about this time, when the auditors come through and finalize the numbers, but it's one of, I was going to ask Tim tonight, but Tim isn't here, so I don't think that it's fair to assume, but one of the things that I was looking at in terms of the explanation and for the general fund carryover, and I looked at this last night, so I didn't really have the opportunity today to send Tim an email, but if you look at the, whatever page that is, the explanation page, it says McMillan Library, $87,000. I see that elections outlay $2,500, police department outlay $33,000, and fire department outlay $26,000. I see all those on the spreadsheet, but it says other operating accounts, $172,000, and it, it says approved for the 2% cost of living adjustment and sickly payout adjustments, but as I go back to the expenditures and revenues, I don't, I was trying to put pen to paper, and I couldn't, there's some expenditures on here that are what I would assume larger than 2%, and one of them, like the McMillan Library, there's two line items on here, one of them is $23,993, and the question is, is that payroll? Because that's more than half of what the fire department has. I don't know, it's a case where I don't know enough about the library to know how many employees are specifically there, but without having Tim here again to ask, I guess, I feel that I can't vote on this.
The question was related to the first item, the unexpended 2017, sorry, item, or page four, I just want to clarify what the, maybe I can answer the question. So page four of the, of the amendment, where the detail is, actually the resolution is?
The, the resolution part would be on the page one, right? Because that's where the actual whereas.
Yeah, I guess the resolution carries throughout all the pages, I guess.
So it would be on the last page, correct, correct. And it would be right on the top where it says resolution explanation underneath general fund, and then it has all the different explanations. And really, I went through this last night, I took the time to read it, I, sometimes, I guess I had a little bit of time, but everything else kind of added up, except for the other operating accounts to the tune of the $172,397. It seems like there, it doesn't, doesn't really add up, and, but I don't have all the information either, so that's why it's kind of like adding two plus two, but without knowing what the final cost. final cost is, those two numbers don't really do anything for it, so.
So if the concern is specific to the McMillan Fund, they do receive a lot of grants throughout the year, and so if they're unspent or unallocated, if that was specific to the $87,000, but you're saying it's actually the 172, which is the 2%?
Yeah, and there's actually two-line items underneath the general fund, which would be on page one of it. And the one is the $87,000, which is identified in the resolution explanation, but then there's the second line item from McMillan Library for the $23,993. And if that's specifically just 2% of payroll, again, looking at fire department's payroll of $43,000, that's, with the library, that's more than half of what the expenditure for the fire department would be. So I just, I don't know, maybe there's that many people that are on payroll in terms of where that 2% expenditure would come from.
I know they're, I guess, quick math, their operations are about a million, subsidy about a million dollars a year to the city, and it's all payroll, you know, generally. So it could be 2% of that is 20-some thousand, so that makes sense, just in quick math. But if you want, yeah, thank you. I just wanted, if there was something quick I could address, then I would have been happy to do it. Any other requests to speak? Alderpersons, Zerflu, you're next.
Basically, just a correction. I noticed it when I was reading the minutes. It's actually Resolution 12, I think in the minutes it said.
I'm glad, I'm glad you asked that, because I was going to say something, but it's, Tim preemptively used the number 12, and it's supposed to be number 13, so I will amend it once it's approved.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing no further requests to speak, motion is to postpone this item until next week's
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item number nine B, a report of the Public Works Committee meeting held on April 3rd. Alderperson Rehm, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, also attending were Joe Terry, Joe Ixted, and Joe Kazicki. Item one was to review the DPW report. The report was reviewed and is available for viewing on WIrapids.org website. Item two, review and consider approval of Amendment Number Two to the East Grand Avenue Design Contract 6999-07-19, is moved and seconded to approve the Amendment Number Two to the East Grand Avenue Design Contract. The motion carried unanimously. Item three, review and consider approval of the amended transportation project plat for the Second Avenue South Project, is moved and seconded to approve of the amended transportation project plat for the Second Avenue South Project, and that motion carried unanimously. Item four, review and consider approval of the construction services contract with MSA Professional Services for the East River Bank Project, is moved and seconded to approve of the construction services contract with MSA Professional Services at a cost not to exceed $149,400 for the East River Bank Project. Motion carried unanimously. Item five, review and consider approval of proposals for concrete pavement joint ceiling on West Grand Avenue, west of Riverview Expressway, is moved and seconded to approve of the proposal from American Paving Solutions for concrete pavement joint ceiling on West Grand Avenue, west of Riverview Expressway, at a cost of $1.99 per lineal foot. That motion carried unanimously. Item six, review of the 2017 MS4 Annual Stormwater Report submitted to the DNR, is moved and seconded to approve the report submitted to the DNR as presented. The motion carried unanimously. Item seven, review request to discuss condition of the alley west of Second Avenue between Park and Lion Street. The condition of the alley west of Second Avenue between Park and Lion Street was discussed. No action was taken on the item. Item eight, review referral list. Items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 were removed from the list. Item nine was to adjourn, is moved and seconded to adjourn. The motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:59 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Motion by Rehm, is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item nine, see, the report of the Human Resources Committee meeting held on April 3rd. Alderperson Furkey.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met April 3rd at 4:05 PM. The meeting was called to order by Chairperson Todd Furkey. Present were Alderperson Furkey, Alderperson Kubasak, and Alderperson Kellogg was excused. Also present were Dawn Urban, Mayor Bruink, Tim DiSorci, Travis Shalinski, Debbie Nash, SuShil, Paul Volard, and Shane Blazer. Item number two was benefits, benefits presentation from M3. Since we are waiting for additional information from M3, Chairperson Furkey made the motion to table this agenda item. That motion was seconded by Alderperson Kubasak. This item will be moved to the, to a future HR committee meeting, and that motion carried. Item number three was to review and approve the request from the Department of Public Works for a lump sum merit pay for its members of .16% of their base wages, so total pay equals the 2% wage increase provided to other city employees. Travis Shalinski explained the request. A motion was made by Chairperson Furkey to approve the request and seconded by Alderperson Kubasak. That motion carried. Item number four was to review and approve our final proposal from Tyler Technologies for implementation and maintenance of Munis as our HR and payroll software. Chairperson Furkey made a motion to approve, and Alderperson Kubasak seconded the motion. Approval was made for the initial implementation cost of $296,000, including travel, and $31,500 for initial hardware and software requirements cost. Approval was also granted for $15,000 per year for an annual server backup and licensed maintenance costs, as well as annual renewal costs for Munis software, estimated to be $31,500. That motion carried. Item number five was to review and approve a parks maintenance/arborist modified job description. Paul Volard explained the request to modify the current position. A motion by Alderperson Kubasak and seconded by Chairperson Furkey to approve the modified job description and the skilled labor Class Four pay grade. That motion carried. Item number six was adjournment. A motion was made by Chairperson Furkey and seconded by Alderperson Kubasak to adjourn. That motion carried. The meeting adjourned at 4:44 PM. With that, I would move for adoption.
Motion by Furkey, is there a second? A second by Kubasak? Any requests to speak on the committee report? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 10, miscellaneous reports. Item one is the Southwood County Airport Commission meeting is held on March 1st and March 15th. Item two is the Housing Authority meeting held on March, sorry, February 28th. Item three, the Police and Fire Commission meeting held on March 14th. And item four, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department monthly report, monthly update for March. Alderpersons, what are your wishes regarding that item?
I'll make a motion to approve all reports.
Motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Dolan? Any requests to speak on the reports? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, zero nays.
Item 11, referral of communications to committees. Alderpersons, are there any referrals to communication to committees? Alderperson Kubasak?
Thank you. I don't have a referral for committee. I just wanted to take this moment to thank Todd Furkey, as well as Mr. Dolan, for their public service. Sometimes this isn't the funnest job. Sometimes we deal with very challenging issues and have to publicly vote on those. And it's, you know, a very thankless job, and like I said, I wish you guys well, and hopefully we might see you around again, so, all right. Thank you.
Are there any further requests to speak, or any referral to communication to committees? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Got a motion by Zerflu, is there a second? Second by Furkey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you all, and have a great evening.